It's nine o'clock. I call this meeting the Usher County Mission Order. A little moon and silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and the God in the middle for liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The County Commission of Upshur County West Virginia held their regular meeting minutes at the courthouse annex on Thursday, July 7, Wednesday, 16th at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rattley called the meeting to order. Present for J.C. Rattley, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, Jacqueline Denklocher, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously, unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of June 30, 2016, with type of practical corrections. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved and authorized the signing of the CBS Health Maintenance Choice Letter agreement concerning terms and conditions of group participation relating to the Usher County Group Insurance Plan as administered by Usher. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved the reappointment of Philip Loftus to Buckinghamshire Airport Authority with the term expiration of June 3, 2019. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved the reappointment of Carrie Wallace to Buckingham and Usher Airport Authority. Jackie, I think these are the wrong ones. Yeah, these are the wrong ones, sorry. These are the minutes for Usher County Commission meeting, July 21, 2016. The County Commission of Usher County West Virginia held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, July 21, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cutwright called the meeting to order. Present for Terry Cutwright, Commissioner, J.C. Rattley, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, Jacqueline Denklocher, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously, unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of July 14, 2016, with type of practical corrections. Karen Jacobson, Randolph County Housing Authority Director, P. D. Department of the Commission, provided a review of services provided by the agency. Ms. Jacobson advised that the RCHA serves up in counties providing services such as housing assistance for low income participants. The RCHA is a sponsor of a program called New Shield North Central West Virginia, which provides 10 months of training in various fields including construction and healthcare. Carrie Wallace provided a review of 1094C and not 1095C reporting services and recommended to contract with Total Administrative Services Corporation, or ACA, employer reporting services for services previous for services, which were previously provided by MCQ Consulting, LLC. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the employer mandate reporting services contract with Total Administrative Services Corporation. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the Usher Plan Sponsor Acknowledgement regarding the responsibility and fees related to patient center outcome resurgence due. Terry Cutwright reviewed correspondence from James Farrell, Office of Emergency Management Director, regarding the recommendation made by FEMA to apply for public assistance for damage caused by Jim Floodbank. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved to move forward with the request for public assistance as recommended by James Farrell, Carrie Wallace, who called law. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the claim for unclaimed property due to being added to the Office of the State Treasurer, unclaimed property division. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved and authorized the signing of the order of the Usher County Commission to take place to place that county option question on the November 2016 general election ballot allowing Usher County voters to determine whether non-intoxicating beer, wine, or alcoholic beverages should be sold, dispensed after 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. Terry Cutwright advised that the Commission is taking neutral position on the matter. Now, ready and packed for Rattley House. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved the appointment of Timothy S. Quarters as life guardian of Buckinghamshire Recreation and Park Pool effective July 25, 2016 at the rate of $8.75 per hour. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission approved the reappointment of Joe Fairley to Buckingham and Usher Park and Recreation Advisory Board with a term expiration June 30, 2018. At 9:30 a.m., WYK Incorporated Representative Joe Sinclair appeared before the Commission for bid opening for a contract of services for the courthouse chimney repair. After review on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved to accept the bid option number one, submitted by Robert "Bald" Fisherver and Sons Incorporated with an amount of $91,200. Bid option number two was rejected. No other bids were received. Mr. Fisherver estimated that construction will require three more weeks. At 9:45 a.m., on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-98-4 to discuss the selection of the E-911 Communications Senate Director in Training, present for Terry Cutwright, J.C. Rattley, Troy Brady, Carrie Wallace, and Tabitha Perry. The Commission returned to open session at 10:00 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Carrie Wallace provided a review of the interview process and scoring system with Houston Nevada wedding applicants for the position of E-911 Communications Senate Director in Training. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the selection of Doyle Cutwright to be offered to be offered the position of E-911 Communications Senate Director in Training at his current rate of the pack until the retirement of current Director Steve Leener. Upon Mr. Leener's retirement, Mr. Cutwright will move into the position of Director at the year of salary of $47,460 per salary guidelines of the West Virginia Division of Labor. Terry Cutwright advised that Doyle Cutwright is not relevant to him. At 10:13 a.m., on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-98-4 to discuss the potential property acquisition for relocation of 17 family court circuit and in an effort to accommodate the addition of a judge to the 26th Judicial Circuit Court, present for Terry Cutwright, J.C. Rattley, Troy Brady, Carrie Wallace, and Tabitha Perry. The Commission returned to open session at 10:20 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Terry Cutwright reviewed the following four information items. Number one, correspondence from Earlway Tomlin, Governor, command correction, program grant award to the Usher County Commission in the amount of $180,000. Two, correspondence from Stephen Handberry, West Virginia Security Board chairperson, approving a court security fund grant in to the Usher County Commission in the amount of like $6,297. Three, correspondence from Aura Al Ash Deputy State Auditor regarding West Virginia Code 7-7-7A regarding spending or obligating more than 50% of a budget before the end of the calendar year. Four, memorandum from Phil Scheng, Executive Director of West Virginia Partnership for Elder Living Incorporated, and Mary Steens, Executive Director of Community Works in West Virginia Incorporated, inviting the submission of a letter of interest in making our community a model senior living community. CWWPT and WBPL want to partner with three communities in West Virginia to provide technical and monetary assistance to become model senior living communities. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rattley, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission posted a little letter of interest. Number five, July 13, 2016, Article, Governor Tomlin Addresses West Virginia's Long-Term Flood Recovery Affairs. Six, FEMA Daily Fact Sheet Day, 19, July 13, 2016. Seven, Usher County E-911 Mileage Reports, June 2016, as listed. Eight, Agenda Sandor Notice of Meetings, as listed. Nine meetings as listed. Ten meetings as listed. We have an appointments needed or coming in, as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The Commission approved the following exoneration sand or refunds, as listed. The Commission approved the following consolidation of rent checks, as listed. The Commission approved the following request to Usher County meetings, as listed. The Commission recessed at 12:20 p.m. The Commission attended meetings of the Usher County Department Supervisors and the Usher County Policy Board. The Commission reconvened at 2:35 p.m. The Commission viewed agenda items for future meetings, receive project updates, and discuss administrative business items. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rattley, the Commission meeting adjourned at 2:35 p.m. Usher County Commission meeting, July 27, 2016. The Commission, the County Commission of Usher County, West Virginia held a special meeting at the courthouse annex on Wednesday, July 27, 2016, at 1:00 a.m. Terry Cutwright called the meeting to order, present for Terry Cutwright, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, and Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator. All motions passed unanimously, unless otherwise stated. Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, read the Section 147 Act, approval and writ of contract in its entirety. This contract approves the Selbyville Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated to enter into a contract in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $309,269 to finance equipment or project consisting of one fire truck, P. A. built chassis, which will be located at the firehouse of the Selbyville Fire Department Incorporated. Clifton Shaw, fire chief, informed the Commission that all of the paperwork has been prepared. A $100,000 down payment has been made and that the truck is currently being built. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission approved and authorized the passing of interest signed with the contract. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, the Commission meeting adjourned at 1:10 p.m.
You've heard the reading of the minutes from July 21, 2016, and July 27, 2016. Are there any additions or corrections? You scared me, Jackie. I had that paper all marked up. If not, I'm entertaining motion to approve the two minutes. Is that moving? The room is settled. The room is settled. All papers read and filed, staying out. Close the door. Eyes out, so ordered. We have a 9:15 appointment this morning with Mr. Laura B. Meadows, Executive Director of Usher County Convention and Visitor Bureau Annual Report. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, so each year at the end of our fiscal year, we come to both the county and city and we give you an overview of what the Convention and Visitors Bureau has done in the past year and some of our goals for the upcoming year. So if you've listened to this before, it's pretty much, you know, we rotate the same thing because consistency is key when we're trying to promote ourselves and brand ourselves. So I'm going to give an overview of this annual report and on the backside of my talk and you can just kind of see an example of different ads that we run. This is a combination of print ads, online ads, things that cover just generic advertisements for the CBB, ads for the event center, and then some of the ads that we were able, like the Fiddler's Mill rat card, you can see a small thing that we produced and printed a rat card on behalf of Fiddler's Mill. So a little bit of everything included today. But whenever the CBB started five years ago and something we continue for the past five years is an advertising campaign that's called What Small Town Charm Is All About. We did kind of a benchmark study and we surveyed a lot of people in the community and we said, you know, how, what would you, within three words, what would you relate to Buckingham and small town and, you know, the charming aspect of our town kept popping up. So we came up with that tagline, What Small Town Charm Is All About. So whenever we're running generic ads about the community, that's what we use. So that's kind of correlated with all of our creative designs, even our website, our travel guide, and even any of our ads that we run. It all kind of has that similar feel to it and again, that tagline. So we've been running that for the past five years. It's been really successful. And a few years ago, we had an opportunity to create a really true project with the Division of Tourism or new advertising campaign where we started what's, we started Stay the Weekend. So Stay the Weekend, I think this has been the third year that we run this campaign. And what it does is it starts around April and it runs until the end of November and it highlights five or six major events that happened in Buckingham and Usher County. And we invite people to come, stay the weekend for that event or festival and then take part of everything else that Buckingham has to offer with shopping and eating and just the different sites in the area. And that's been really successful. So like I said, it starts in April, so we start kicking it off with the Strawberry Festival and then we run it into November to cover all the Christmas craft shows that we have because a lot of people don't like to go to the mall for their Christmas shopping so they can come into Buckingham for something a little bit more unique. So it's been really successful. One other advertising campaign we run is the 33 Things to Do, Long Route 33. We partner with Lewis County and Randolph County and we started that again about two to three years ago. We received a grant to get that campaign kicked off and that grant paid for the creation of a website, printing of some rat cards, and then within that grant, we ran some direct advertisements. It's a little bit slacked off here in the past couple of years. Funding from the state level's been reduced and the CBVs, you know, we always have to come up with extra money in our budgets to go towards that project. Thankfully, the website's still operating and it still gets traffic. We still have copies of the rat cards, we keep those distributed. We did apply for a grant in the spring to help push that forward a little bit more. It wasn't approved, but we're going to need in the near future and try to find another grant source to help fund that project just because it doesn't take a lot of maintenance because once we get it all put together, it kind of runs with itself, but we need to just continue to put some energy and effort into it. So that's one thing that's coming here that we're going to focus on. And one new thing we did this past year and that we're kind of tweaking for this current year is an advertising campaign just for the event center. So the event center has been a learning process. Every single day, there's something that pops up and you have to kind of rethink things. But it's been a really big opportunity for Buckingham, too. So within the event center, as far as advertising, we kind of focus on two different markets. One's going to be meetings and conferences because we're in the center part of the state and that's one thing that we want to relay out to everybody throughout the state is we're in the center part of the state. So if you're having a one-day meeting or even a, you know, a week-long meeting, you need to pull people from all over the state. This is just a central location. It's a very simple facility. There's nothing really too wild and crazy with it. People can kind of customize the facility to meet their needs. So you don't have to stick within the caterer on our site. You can pick different people. So we try to work with people as much as possible. So we had an advertising campaign that's just focused on meetings and conferences. And then we have another campaign that's going to be revolved around banquets and wedding receptions. So these are two very different clientele's, so we have different advertising campaigns that kind of covers both. Like I said, last year was the very first time that we started running ads for the event center and it was interesting to kind of see what worked and what didn't. So we tweak things for this upcoming year. And one thing we're going to do for both the CBB and the event center is really going to focus more on social media. It's incredibly cost-effective because this is the first year we've really had to cut our budget, so we're trying to find different ways to spend our money. So it's really cost-effective and I think you're just connecting with people a lot better, too. You can see different steps, you know, whenever we're running our ads, we also have our website. We have our travel guide. Our website gets really great traffic. It averages 20,000 plus visits per year, so that's usually about 40 to 50 visits per day. And one thing that's interesting is whenever we look at how long people are staying on our site, it averages around two minutes. So that means that they're not just visiting our website and then just saying, oh, not interested in leaving. They're looking at different pages, they're clicking within the page, and they're going deeper and deeper into what's being offered in our community. The most popular page is always our calendar events. So if anybody ever has anything to be added up, added on, and like I said, there's a lot of traffic that hits our calendar. Travel guides, we distribute 15,000 to 20,000 every single year and that distribution's to all the welcome centers, CBVs throughout the state, and then whenever we're running an ad, people might see that ad, they ask for more information and then we can do a direct mailing of our travel guide to that individual. So it keeps us busy definitely to mail 15,000 to 20,000 travel guides every year. And you'll also notice our hotel motel tax. The past five years, we've seen a steady increase ranging from 5% up to even 11% one year, but this past fiscal year, we did see a 10% decrease and we related that just with the oil and gas industry. You know, we had a lot of long-term workers that were coming in and out of our area and they were filling our hotels, which we can look at it as a negative thing. I look at it, try to spin it into a positive, but there's been times, you know, during Strawberry Festival, whenever there are no hotel rooms and people then have to stay somewhere else. And some of those hotel rooms are used by overnight workers, so maybe this will free up a little bit more space for visitors and tourists. But there are some periods of time in Usher County whenever you can't find around Wesleyan weekends, that type of thing. The event center refresh report, like I said, we've got an advertising campaign, just to keep you updated with that process, you know, we have, like I said, it's been a learning process and we've got a really great relationship with people at the state level. We go down to Charleston about twice a year and we kind of recash everything and say, this is working for us and this isn't. And they're always concerned about taking care of their operations, too, but if they can work with us, they're very willing to kind of, you know, look at the terms again and work with us as much as they can. So they're, we've had a really good working relationship the past couple of years on the state level. And then on the local level, too, everybody that works out, that are in the center, they're out there, they help us whenever something crazy happens, like the ice maker stopped working, they're out there tearing it apart and trying to figure it out. So it's, like I said, it's something new every day. I didn't think I'd have to worry about the ice maker, but we worry about the ice maker every once in a while. But it is a huge opportunity for us. And social media, public relations, we're active on social media. We network with a variety of community groups here in Usher County and then we are also throughout the state trying to connect with different people. And upcoming projects for this coming year, like I said, we're going to be a little bit more focused on social media. We have a 29-page travel guide that we've kind of updated throughout the years, but I think we're going to do a complete overhaul redesign. We're going to cut it down a little bit, part of that's connected to us cutting our budget a little bit, but also it's just kind of time to make it a little bit more refreshed. And then as far as the event center refresh report, with advertising, our whole focus with advertising the event center is going to be drive traffic to our website. Within our website, we have a form called an RFP, the Archives of Request for Proposal and Proposal. And basically, people can fill out that information. We get an idea of the type of events they're, they're interested in posting. We can add to their contact information and then we can provide them a quote and kind of start that conversation. So last year, we kind of dipped our toe in the water as far as advertising and this year, I feel pretty comfortable with really kind of jumping into it and see if we can boost our sales. That's a really quick overview of what we've done the past year. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, but we say this.
I've noticed described by seems like the event center is starting to show a vision.
It really is, you know, with the CBB, whenever we run an ad, we never know if somebody who truly stays in town saw our ad and that's why they came. With the event center, we were able to run an ad, somebody saw an ad on Metro News Online. They called us. We worked out a contract and they booked the facility. So it's interesting to see that process happen, but yeah, we've got some good contacts from state level and some local people as well.
Okay. It seems like you're more active as an organization promoting the company and its interests. Over the last several years, you've developed a more progressive aspect. One thing I, I don't know how to, I don't know how it can be effective or whose job it would be, whether it's the chamber or Visitors Bureau, but I know that there seems to be, there's so much going on sometimes that you have different organizations competing against each other. I don't mean intentionally against each other, but you'll have a function on a certain date and time and another organization equally deserving having a function the same date and time. And I don't know if there's some, some manner by which these organizations could be coordinated or the efforts could be coordinated to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to promote their, you know, specific organization or fundraiser, but not compete timelines with the people who would be attending that. Somebody probably.
It is, it's a hassle. And we have some people that know to call us and they say, no, we're trying to do something. If it's a larger event, we're going to do it this weekend, what do you think? And then we can kind of use our resources to say, there's nothing happening, or if you do have it this weekend, you can partner with us or you want to consider moving it. Now, I'll say, like, our calendar of events, because we're getting traffic from Pennsylvania and Ohio onto our website, we try to make it very visitor-focused. But Maria Bray comes out with a weekly newsletter that she's emailing out and it's called Out and About Buckingham and she's done a really good job to kind of take the tourism-related events, the local events as far as spaghetti dinners, and package them all together. She sends it out weekly. I don't know how much foresight she has into future events, but I think she's seen that void as well, so she's taken it on herself to do it, but I agree, I mean, it's always hard.
Well, you'd rather have more than not.
Yeah, that's right.
So I guess we're blessed in that, in that manner, but anyway, well, thank you for your wonderful attention.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a 9:30 appointment with George Racing, discussion of public alley restroom hours. George? Thanks for coming in.
See you for a little bit.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm a little dizzy. I guess I'm here about the restroom, you know, according to will, also about the annex and doesn't check it out, I mean, will. Have you done one ready, will?
Hi, Eddie.
Yes? All right. Tell me, on what basis you've closed the restrooms down to nine, what's nine hours or five days a week? Seven days a week.
Excuse me, Mr. Moonstreet, take a look at it. Bank of Lishon?
I realize you've got that.
And so many portions, George, of what our staff paid.
That's according to the will. Commission's supposed to take care of the restroom, make sure they're open. We have two long portion, one is commission, basically six years of experience. What's wrong is you two, Sheriff, and you the police, sitting down and figuring out a way to catch these sick owners.
I look at it as a liability issue. I've read the will and understand we're supposed to have two restrooms open and maintained in reference to receiving. I understand all that and that was back in the 1990s when that was done. With that being said, I'm worried about the liability issue of somebody coming down there late at night and entering the lady's bathroom when somebody's in there, if you want me, doing something they shouldn't be. And I've got to explain to some citizen in the county how this commission knew there was a problem there, but we left the bathroom open. And whoever this lady is that something happens to, I have a problem trying to explain that to a victim here when we all. that to a victim here when we all three commissioners know there is a problem there. With that being said, we try to maintain the restroom to be open before the courthouse and annex and the businesses are open here in town. We close the restrooms after the annex, courthouse, and the businesses are closed. We do that for, in my opinion, trying to save the county commission liability. We've tried to put cameras up, we've tried to do everything we can. I just do not want a lady of this county to walk into that female restroom and have some male in there or whoever's doing that, see her, knowing that she recognized him or could recognize him, and something happened to the female, and being the commissioner going, "Well, we knew there was a problem," you know what I mean? But we didn't address the problem. I understand that we shouldn't keep the restrooms open, and I've had people say, "Well, we should buy hazmat suits," you know what I mean? To have the bathrooms cleaned up. I certainly don't think we pay county employees to put them in a hazmat suit and tell them to go down there and clean the bathrooms and hose them down, you know what I mean? I don't think that would be the proper thing to do. Now, if there's some way we knew how to catch them, you know what I mean? And I had people say, "Well, you ought to put cameras in the ladies' restroom." You can't do that, you would be sued, you know what I mean? So I've tried everything now. If somebody has a way that we can do this...
That's why I suggested before to get together...
I mean, I think it's good, but then, George, I don't know of any time...
All the way to check them out.
I don't know of any time that somebody needs to be down here after hours, at midnight or 1:00 in the morning, down this alley by an annex, using the restroom. With that being said, the man's restroom has been used for homeless people. One homeless person stayed in the man's restroom, for example, has committed murder in Lewis County and now served penitentiary time. These are the things that this commission, in my opinion, should try to prevent. With that understanding, I certainly have a doubt of Danny's will says.
What advice does your prosecutor attorney give, is your legal advisor?
Prosecutor attorney? If you're asking for prosecutor attorney's advice, he thinks we probably should keep them open.
According to the will, that's pretty well it. And if we hadn't agreed to the will, you wouldn't be in this annex, we wouldn't be talking about the restrooms, because the money would be down to get some library, and they own the two lots for the settlement. I grant you, you've got a problem. At the same time, I think according to the will, you've got to figure out a way to solve it.
I think that's our job. Figure out something.
For 20 years, they haven't had much trouble. Now, this is no reflection against you, buddy, but if somebody had a grudge against you for being a deputy and trying to take it out on you because you've come...
Oh, I'm sure that's happened.
Well, that thought's crossed my mind. But little under, board industrial, and I, after reading this, there's no way we can turn down $200 million for Uptown County. And that's what's needed, and we agreed to this, and it doesn't say you may, it says you will.
And I understand what the will says. I understand it was 1990. With that being said, George, I'm sure that Dal Jennings was sitting right here and knew the problem we was having, that Dal Jennings would say to this commission, "Close them restrooms down, it's a courthouse and annex and there's nothing going on. We keep them restrooms open when the Strawberry Festival's going on and there's a function in town." Now, it could be long, Dal Jennings might say, "No, give it to the given library," you know what I mean? I don't know. But I think anybody that has common sense that would give the money here to keep a facility, build an annex, which we're lucky to have, you know what I mean? That would see the potential problem, begin to address it.
You read his will, restroom really top of his list, annex secretary.
I've got it right here. And I understand that restroom is a very important part of him.
Yes, that's what that does numerous times.
And I agree with that aspect, that we should have public restrooms, and somebody shouldn't have to go somewhere if they're conducting business or anywhere close to the courthouse or the annex, that they shouldn't have to go anywhere except, you know what I mean? We should have a restroom and maintain it here, which we do. And if you go in our restroom down here, our maintenance takes excellent care of it.
But they are closed all day on Saturday and Sunday, too.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm just pointing out the way the will's written.
No, I can read the will, the will's...
Is the why you read set to the conditions?
The will is quite, you know what I mean? I understood what the prosecutor attorney has said, you know what I mean?
I agree that you felt you had a problem, somehow you're gonna have to deal with it. You need to catch that per, or whatever you call it.
We did...
Maybe more than one of them.
Yeah, you're right, and prosecutor. We did open the restrooms the week of Strawberry Festival with no incidents.
Well, I had several people saying, "Well, I suppose we open at all times." So we went down the Indian's Day Club.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we open them up for a while and see how, you know, since we have opened the week of Strawberry Festival, we had no problems.
You've got a different situation. At the Strawberry Festival, you've got people here 24/7 going down the restroom. You've got a different situation when you open the restroom up, you know what I mean? On the weekend, you have nothing going on.
Right, we've got a different situation than any other restroom because of this will.
I was going to say, we, you know, our staff and others have contacted city officials, for example. And I think at one point, there was a bathroom facility down by the riverbank that was open pretty much 24 hours a day. Of course, it was not in the same structures that Judge Jennings provided, but the city ended up closing it after hours.
I've heard it.
It's a, as you say, and you've recognized, it's a, it is a conundrum, a problem. How you resolve, on one side, you want to honor...
I understand.
...the wishes of a man who dedicated much of his life to his county, and was gracious in his will to provide for that structure, as well as his particular interest in bathroom facilities. The other side, you have what Buddy's arguing, which is a public safety, it's not strictly a matter of, and he, you know, the facilities being available, it's a matter of, is there a liability issue? We have, and I think you probably are saying the same story, that people use that facility for stuff other than, but intention.
I understand you do have a problem.
And we can't, we don't have the resources to post a law enforcement officer, a chance to spend 24 hours a day. So it is a conundrum.
But couldn't be a way that the Sheriff's Department and City Police together could check it fair off?
Well, we'd have to discuss that with them, so...
I understand, but city people use the same as the county.
And, and you know what this really lies, responsibility, I'm not trying to duck the responsibility, but where this really lies is with the public. The public that uses the facility that was intended to do good, provide that facility for the general public. I'd use it myself. And we have, society, there are people among us in society, unfortunately, who, I can't tell them why they would do something like that, or they could do the destruction.
Since I was one of the commissioners, signed the agreement, I felt I shook them down, I speak my piece.
Well, I would...
I would replace them with you to that.
I'd say, I don't know that we can, still the process is kind of...
Sheriff, Chief, and City Attorney.
I'd still like to open them up for a time period, see what other person's doing, it may not even be any area now.
Do you have a good camera on the door?
We have cameras down on the other building, the old jail building, point back, but it's too far away. We've got prices on putting a camera on the old courthouse.
You have a quote from Micrologic to mount a dome camera on an extended wall bracket on the outside of the sheriff's office, looking down at the public restroom, and also install a CCTV cable that would be used in the sheriff's office, and the amount of $132.82. And you also have an estimate for a, two lights that would be motion-activated, that could be mounted between the two doors, where if somebody were to open the bathroom door, the light would immediately turn on. And that's $120.
I think I'd like to move that, if we do this, I'd like to move that camera from the old courthouse to between the two doors on the bathroom. And I work where they can't just hold their head down and put a hood up, and you can't tell who's going in, then we can see everybody that's going in and out of the bathroom.
You still use the camera that's on the old...
No, I'm talking about the old courthouse, the new one. The new camera, instead of putting it across the aisle, put it right there at the doors on the bathroom.
That's where it's gonna be.
On the bathroom?
Yeah, on the sheriff's office side, they'll mount it with an arm bracket where it will shine.
Ah, we need it down over to where they can't put the hood up and put the hood down, they've got to move in the door.
I could see if you're gonna do that, I'd wait to cut those cameras in before I try again. Have your discussion with the sheriff, see if he's definitely checking it on, if he's gonna tell who's running the phone times.
But if we open it up, we may not have to put the camera.
Well, I'd put the cameras up first. That's just my position.
You're gonna have a problem there in the bathrooms. We've had a problem there in them bathrooms ever since it's been built. First, the problem was they dropped drugs off, and when inmates come up, by the time inmates come by, "I gotta use the restroom." An inmate run in there, drugs would be under the commode or whatever, you know what I mean? And they would pick up drugs, male and female. And we've had that problem ever since the restroom's been there. We've had Greg Smith stay in the man's bathroom down there, you know what I mean? That was homeless, you know what I mean? And it ended up shooting somebody in Lewis County. Now, we've got, and we've had people that went in there and, not to the extent that you showed, George, and I know we hadn't seen all the pictures, but we've had people go in there and do some things that shouldn't. I've got a problem with anybody thinking that our people here, the cleaning ladies, should get hazmat suits and dress up as whoever boots, and go down and scrub the damn walls down and hose it down, you know what I mean? I'm not expecting one of our employees to do that, and I will not vote to open up them restrooms unless somewhere there's some cameras or lighting on there that protects the citizens in here, at least we can say we're trying to do. Because I think if you open them now, you have a liability. If some woman walks down there 10:00 at night because the restrooms are open, and she gets raped, or something happens to her, I think it's on us.
That's for the cameras.
That's what I say. Discuss this with your prosecutor, your sheriff, chief, to come up with some solution.
And I beg to question, then, what do we do prior to, if we agree to install extra security devices? What do we do in the interim period of time? Do we keep the bathrooms closed?
I keep them closed, and you've got to prepare a few of them with your cameras. I think that would be a legitimate reason.
Really gives us a chance to speak with the sheriff and other law enforcement.
That was mine, James, I'm not gonna deny that.
I think Dal Jennings' will is quite clear on what he wants, but I think with that...
You have a question, what?
With that, I think we've got to do it so we can protect the citizens, especially the women that might walk in and out of who we're dealing with in that restroom, but until we can pretty well guarantee, you know what I mean, the safety of people using that restroom, I'm not gonna vote to open them up here.
Is there a way that you can have a camera where the comm center can see who's coming and going to the restroom? I've heard you can do this with computers, I don't know, I'm no computer whack.
You can do what now, George?
Somehow you can hook up cameras coming in on a computer.
Oh, you're gonna have a lot of cameras to see what's going and coming.
This quote is for the sheriff's department to be able to view who's coming in and out. If you would like it to be monitored at the 911 center, you can do that as well.
I thought it would be better if you got somebody there 24/7.
You'd have to have 911 do it, because a lot of times, the sheriff's department's not in it, they already don't have the cameras there.
It is recorded, though. It is recorded, yes.
The thing about knowing instantly who's going in and out there till the next morning when you go in, you don't know who, who misses the corporate, you know? But you could go back and look at the review tapes.
So if you've got defendants all seated together, sat in the room, you know who went in and Those are just suggestions, like I said, you've got a problem, and I realize it, and I felt since I was one of them that approved it, I should have wanted to now bring it to your table. Gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Good work, George. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, George.
Is there a motion to open up the restrooms 24 hours a day, seven days a week, after the light and camera installed?
All right. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'd like to know a little bit more...
After this.
Before I make a vote, I said, we could find out what it's gonna cost and stuff. And I know you've got some particulars. Is that the cost running through 911? Is that just the cost of putting the camera up?
That's the cost of the camera being monitored at the sheriff's department. The install and the purchase of the camera, and the CCTV line will be right into the sheriff's department where they would see it, but it would still be recorded, to where if something happened to you, go in and pull the recording. I can get an updated estimate from Micrologic on the 911 center being able to view.
I would rather the 911 center, here's the number of the sheriff's department.
I'll amend my motion, I make, I make a, well, not even a motion, I request that we defer action on this until you have a chance to do the cost estimates for the camera and related, you know, putting the cable to the 911 center, maybe also the sheriff's office at both locations.
Buddy, since you wrote up the costs, think what you're spending on the comm center since the day it's been built.
Yeah, and I don't know...
And how much more you're gonna have to spend.
And I don't know why I feel like we spent all the money up here at the shake-up to put it up, so I didn't want to get in this new facility, 911. You know what I mean?
You and I agree there 100%.
Because it's, you know what I mean? Sometimes when you sit here and you see what other county commissioners have done in the past, upsets me. And you have no idea until you sit in this seat.
Tell me about it, stand there and done that.
It will be at least a week when you order the camera, before it can be installed, maybe two weeks. So would you like to give a ceiling price to go ahead, or if they come back, it's definitely $50 more, let's say it's under $1,000, you want it to go ahead and be ordered? The current quote is for $932.
I would like to know everything before I make a vote on it. That's my opinion, because I can be out of it here, only next to it.
We'll defer until we see difference. My recommendation is we defer, and leave the bathrooms closed until an exception is made.
You need a second on leaving the plugs, I'll do that.
No, I don't think you have to, just to, if you've not taken out the issue, resolve it.
Sure, everybody, who's going in? 9:45.
No, kind of late on that one.
9:45, we have a potential property acquisition for relocation at 75th and 4th Circuit, in an effort to accommodate the additional addition of a judge to 26 judicial court circuit. I may leave the executive session per West Virginia Code 6-984. Motion to move into executive session.
Subway. Second.
And move, second to move into executive session, on favor of the court saying, "I oppose those," as happened so, 10:14, we're exiting the executive session, no decisions before we're back. At 10:30, we have a bid opening, presentation and award, Uptown County Sheriff's vehicle. Until then, I'll go over, I have a discussion, action, approval. I have number one, approval of recommendation for removal, removal of Penelope... Item number one, approval of recommendation for removal of Penelope Palmer as executor in the estate of Robert James Rose, deceased. An order removing Penelope Palmer as executor. Upon approval of the recommendation, Penelope Palmer will be removed as executor from Robert James Rose, deceased. Mrs. Palmer will be ordered to turn over any and all documents regarding the estate. And the sheriff of Uptown County will be appointed as executor of estate, of the estate. Do I have a motion to approve? Some move?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Two, approval and signature of non-power collective billing application.
So this is a collective bill for all of your non-power accounts? You have an example here that you can see. Each one will still be listed individually, so Carol can charge it to the correct account. It does save her from writing 15 checks every week, which is a lot of paperwork. She could use the P-card to pay the bill. A $5,000 transaction rebates $62.50 on the P-card. And you're probably gonna have a charge of, well, two $9.85 charges. So you can still get a $40 rebate if you can write.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item three, approval and signature of statement of interest in multi-hazard mitigation planning. Upon approval, the Uptown County Commission agrees to actively participate in the region's sudden planning and developing natural hazard mitigation planning process. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item four, approval of revised Uptown County Courthouse roof repair project manual repaired by WYK Associates Incorporated. And advertisement of project. The manual includes an invitation for bids for the repair of the courthouse roof that will be funded by the grant award made by the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority. There will be a mandatory pre-bid conference at 3:00 PM on Thursday, August 18, 2016. All sealed bids must be received no later than 9:15 on Thursday, September 1, 2016. Sealed bids will be opened, reviewed, and read aloud by the county commission at 9:15 AM on Thursday, September 1, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item five, approval and signature of order and notice of election for an additional county commission award to fund supplemental salaries, materials, and general operating expenses for the Uptown County Public Library November 8, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item six, approval and signature of fiscal year 2015 State of West Virginia of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, EPG, sub-grant awarded in the amount of $28,965. This is the grant to Jim Farrell, putting it forward right here.
Yeah, it's an annual grant that the OEM applies for. It reimburses for 50% of the salaries and operating expenses of the OEM.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second. Make a motion that you authorized to sign the grant.
Second. Been moved and seconded. We approve, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item seven, approval and signature of fiscal year 17 County Security Grant Contract Agreement Resolution Certification and Court Security Fund Spatial Conditions and Assurances. The grant award is in sum of $26,296 to be used for the purpose of enhancing the county's court security.
The majority of those funds will be spent on additional cameras in the courthouse and courthouse annex. We have not received formal notification of what section of the grant has not been awarded. However, we have been told that it was the prosecuting attorney's office. The state had to obviously cut some of their requests because they receive well in excess of the funds that they are allowed to award. So they basically, across the board, cut all prosecuting attorney's offices because they are an office of the county commission.
We made a wrong repositioning of money to the salaries to the system receivers.
And that's a different grant?
Different grant.
Can we use some of this grant money to transfer your street camera?
No, you have to apply for specific cameras. You have to stick to your budget that you apply.
Do I have a motion to approve? Make a motion that you authorized to sign, approve FY 2015 Division of Homeland Security Grant of $28,965.
You already did $28,000, $26,000.
Yeah, $26,000, do you have any steps?
Yeah, number seven.
Number seven, yeah. Oh, okay. I apologize. Same, same motion, but different number.
Second, no, that's the same number, it's a different number.
Second, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item number eight, approval and signature of ESRI renewal quote in the amount of $5,050 for term period October 1, 2016 to September 30, 2017. Of this amount, $1,200 is to be paid by the assessment reevaluation fund. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item number nine, correspondence from Dennis J. Willis, Esquire, requesting consideration to fill a four-year unexpired term bar association vacancy on the Uptown County Civil Service Board. Upon approval, Mr. Willis' term will expire on 12/31/2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Item number 10, correspondence from James T. Prarrow, OEM Director, requesting the consideration of Brian Shree, OEM Deputy Director, to fill the OEM representative's position on the Uptown County Enhanced Emergency Telephone System Advisory Board effective July 1, 2016. Upon approval, Mr. Shree's term will expire on June 30, 2019. This is an OEM office position?
It's an OEM representative, yes. Previously Dirk Burnside has served as a representative. Jim would like the deputy director to serve as a representative so he can get more involved with the boards and the community that the OEM represents.
Since it's an OEM position and director, recommend Mr. Shree. I'm gonna tell you, a motion to approve.
I will make that motion, and I think Brian Shree would be a good addition to the board.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order.
Mr. President, I'll recuse myself from holding on. Item number 11, I'll move myself to the office, close the door.
There isn't a...
Oh, I guess there is.
I'm not sure we can prove this, but on number 11.
It's like the first made about the term.
We may extend that for a two-term. I don't know about that. Item number 11, correspondence from J.C. Rafferty requesting reappointment to the Quarterage Authority for another four-year term. Upon approval, Mr. Rafferty's term will expire on June 30, 2020.
I will make note that this is one of the boards that the commissioners have within their term. Of course, Commissioner Rafferty isn't running again, so normally he would just fill the position until his end of term and then you would appoint a new commissioner. Because the Quarterage Authority, I assume, would like a commissioner on the board, an acting commissioner. What is this arrangement? But that may not be the case. But in the past, you've always had an acting commissioner on the board.
Well, J.C.'s been really active with him, and I think it's important at this phase in the game that we keep people that know what's going on with him involved. So I'll make a motion and we're approved, Commissioner Rafferty. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that, and I'll concur with your opinion. J.C. will do an excellent job, and he will sit on until June 30, 2020 and represent this commission. I have no problem with him reporting back to this commission.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. I apologize to him.
You can back down then.
They're gonna have time to go on their previous.
Okay, well, thank you, J.C. I appreciate you.
12, correspondence from Robert...
Robin.
Keo?
Robin Keo.
Oh, Robin Keo requesting a revision of the Lewis County, or Lewis Uptown County Control Facility Volunteer Program. Ms. Keo requests, one, the volunteer age limit be changed from 18 years of age to 16 years of age with the stipulation that the volunteer be supervised by an adult volunteer. The volunteer application be modified to address younger applicants. And three, hours for volunteering be expanded on Saturday to 9:00 AM to 10:00 or to 12:00 PM and other Sunday hours. What's the age limit now, Carrie?
18.
Is there a law violation when you go under the age of 18? That's my concern.
I contacted West Virginia Court on Tuesday and asked them for a whole harmless agreement for minors. We had contacted them before about the maintenance garage because seniors are now required to have X amount of community service hours before they can graduate. And the risk pool requested a list of all the machinery that they would be handling. And they drafted a whole harmless that explained what could happen to them while operating that machinery.
The supervisor to pound would like for, instead of putting them age 16 or 18, they must be a junior in high school. I think that makes sense to me. They could still be 16 to be a junior.
17 as well.
Yeah, more than 17, yeah.
Well, Jan, of course, is supporting that recommendation. I think we should take that recommendation quite seriously because she's a wonderful one.
With the Chinese that they, they're a junior in high school?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question. Ms. Keo, with the stipulation that the volunteer be supervised by an adult volunteer, I believe she referenced that she and one other volunteer would be willing to be the adult volunteer. So would you make the motion based on their availability? Because the problem is there's only one employee at the pound on Saturday mornings. So if they have to be supervising the underage volunteers, they're not gonna be able to keep up with their other duties at the public and the cleaning. So it would be necessary to have that second adult there, the adult volunteer, to oversee the minor volunteer. But they would both still have to report back to the employee of the Lewis Uptown County Control Facility. And any approval that you have also has to be based on Lewis County Commission's approval as well, because you jointly own and operate.
The Sunday hours, you did. So expanding to the Sunday hours, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, Jan didn't comment on the Sunday hours. Obviously, it's gonna cost you more to operate on Sundays. Again, that's gonna have to be a conversation with Lewis County.
Maybe, might I suggest we might prefer making a decision on this pending a little bit more study and consultation with our opposite partners at Lewis County.
And I would like to also concur with that. I want to know what Jan actually has to say. And I am certainly not interested in spending...
I'd like a motion table pending further inquiry regarding specifics.
Okay. I have a motion to table item 12 and to concur with Lewis County. Look into this a little bit more. Do I have a second? Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. 13, approval of Uptown County Recreation Park, Cool Blower. Keep on. You have...
I have seen it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Some move?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order.
Do you know who originated that?
I was wondering. Do you know who this is?
Seth Blake.
Seth actually did this himself.
Okay. 14, correspondence from Steve M. Lambert, E911 Director, announcing his retirement effective September 16, 2016. Do I have, does that even prove?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second. Been moved and seconded, on favor of Judge Bob Sagan. Oppose no, eyes have, so order. Approval of Lewis Uptown County Control Facility volunteer Damian T. Cobb. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve? Item 15, bail for lack of motion. Moving on for your information. Item one, FOIA request response prepared by Terry Joe Vena, Uptown County Address and Mapping Project Coordinator, to down me doors, Burris Insurance Solutions. That's information we literally did to release earlier. I mean, not necessarily for them, but for lack of proof before releasing.
It was an approval that you gave Terry Joe to release that information free of charges that affects the insurance ratings of the county.
Item two, FEMA news release, July 23, 2016. Item three, building permits, July 2016. Four, Uptown County mileage report, June 2016, sheriff's office in Duluth Town. It brought my attention to 10:30, so we'll have a bid open.
You've only received one bid, and it's from Jenkins Ford, of the Cannon. It's an amount of $31,234. $31,234. thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars even. Just gonna verify that it meets the specs. One thing it doesn't note is airbags front and side and the warranty of thirty-six thousand miles. So if you wish, you could approve it based on their approval of the warranty and the airbags front and side, or you can have it tabled. One thing that it actually adds that were in your specs is the extra-large series, which I'm not sure what that is.
The actual.
Extra-large series, XL series.
Oh, yeah, that's the F one fifty XL. That's the, has a few more options on it than this basic F one fifty.
That's a true teller.
No, XL, if you can get an XL on a single panel, you know, it's the features that come with it. More of the standard. Well, I would.
Does it meet all the?
Except for the airbags?
Well, it doesn't mention airbags front and side, which I believe are standard in any vehicle in two thousand sixteen.
If it's Ford, it comes standard, that's same as everybody else, and you couldn't change that.
It doesn't note the four, the three-year warranty or thirty-six thousand miles.
That's standard.
Well, we have to clarify that. It's not in contract, I think, which can be done by a simple telephone. Yeah. How, how, kind of motion to approve? If, with, you know, the, you had to clarify about the airbags and the M one?
Some move.
Been moved and seconded on favor of signature by saying aye. Opposed, no. Eyes have it so. Okay. Item five, for your information, Uptown County Sheriff's Financial Statement Period End in June twenty sixteen. Item six, Uptown County Sheriff's Settlement, June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Item seven, Bacchanal Chamber of Commerce Newsletter, July twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen. Item eight, Uptown County Boundary Resource Network Newsletter, August twenty sixteen. Nine, James W. Curry, Uptown Library Counter, August twenty sixteen. Ten, Lewis Uptown County Control Facility Cap Report, June twenty sixteen. Eleven, Uptown County Dog Report, June twenty sixteen. Twelve, Uptown County Development Authority Annual Board and Directors Meeting Invitation, August sixteen, twenty sixteen. That will be held at the Event Center. Agendas and or notices of meetings, item thirteen. Item fourteen, meeting minutes. Item fifteen, meetings. Item sixteen, appointments needed or upcoming. Next regular meeting of Uptown County Commission, August eleventh, twenty sixteen, nine A.M. Uptown County Courthouse Annex. The commission meeting on Thursday, August eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, has been canceled. Do you have any bills to play?